And Janie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Beeny?
Present.
Mr. Upchuck?
Present.
Mr. Vann?
Present.
Ms. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Matson? Mr. Crowe?
Yo. Okay, we have a call and Ms. Matson said she would be here a little bit late, so we shall show soon. And up here I have proof that the meeting was noticed in the proper channels. If anybody would like to see the proof of notice, it's right here. And at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda. So, we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I objected the agenda and as I've pointed out in the past, Dan, that I consider this to be a regular meeting under Board Policy 180. And as such, agenda has to have on it by that policy of an opportunity for the public to speak and this does not have that. And that is not only my interpretation of the policy, but it was the intent of the policy as we drafted it and sent it to the board for approval. So I would be voting no.
Okay. Ray?
Yeah, as I stated in the past, I objected the agenda for the same reasons. I feel that we need a public comment period. We are elected by our constituents and we owe it to them to give them the opportunity to speak at our public meetings. The public comment period is 15 minutes. I'm willing to stay another 15 minutes in the meeting to hear from the public. And I know the board president said that he is going to continue this practice against the wishes and the objections of the other board members. So I am, will be voting no on the agenda as well.
To address that, as I have in the past, when the board changed the policy about meetings, we decided to have 12 regular board meetings, business meetings, and the other meetings, including this meeting, the second board meeting of the month, or other board meetings that are not on a second Monday, have not been designated as regular board meetings. Although that may have been the intent of some of the people who voted for it, it was certainly not put in the policy. As the policy reads, it is not clear. And so I have said until this board makes the policy clear in one way or another, that I will interpret any meeting that is not on the second Monday of every month to be not a regular or not a business meeting of the board. And I welcome anyone that wants to move to change that policy. We can put it on the agenda, discuss it, and change our board policy so that that's clear. But until that time, I am interpreting this to say that this is not a regular or a business meeting. Gina?
Just since one is absent today, we have had it on Policy Committee agendas in the past and it is on for the next meeting as well. We just haven't been able to get to it.
Good. I welcome that to be clarified. And I'm sorry that people don't agree with that, but the policy is not clear and that's my interpretation of the policy. Charles, you have something?
Yeah, I share some of the concerns previously stated. I look forward and welcome the opportunity to have a conversation and make this clear. It's my understanding that there are really two kinds of board meetings, regular board meetings and special board meetings. And the second meeting, my understanding reading these policies doesn't really qualify as a special board meeting.
A separate?
So, but I'm glad that you're open to discussing this now on future agenda addresses.
The, uh, the policy is clear that there's special meetings are designated in 18005. And, and 1801 talks about regular board meetings. It includes the Monday, second Monday of each month as a board meeting. But the specific intent and the desire of the Policy Committee through the board vote was that if we needed another meeting on the fourth Monday, that we would hold that, and that's not a special meeting, it's a, it's a regular meeting. I don't think the policy is ambiguous and I've articulated that that was the intent of the Policy Committee several times, Dan, and the Policy Committee members were in agreement with that. So your interpretation is yours alone.
I just want to point out that the Policy Committee does not decide what the policy says. It just makes a recommendation to the board and then the board votes on it. So the intent of the Policy Committee might be instructional, but it is certainly not controlling. Barb?
So just a clarification here. We do not approve this agenda, does that mean the meeting does not go forward?
Hi. Gina?
Hmm. I don't know the answer to that. I haven't had that happen to me before, so I'm gonna need a minute to look at that. I don't know, Steve, in your expertise, if you know the answer to that.
I would not want to apply on that because I'm a participant in the meeting.
My logical answer is no, it wouldn't move forward because we wouldn't have an agenda that was approved to discuss. So while you talk about that.
Right. I'll have to read it just a second.
Well, when I wrote down the policy, my interpretation was that we would have public comment period. Had I known that that was what Dan had in mind, I would not have voted in favor of that policy. People know that I very much believe in having public comment. That I think is very important, to listen to our constituents. And you know, what's to gain, frankly, Dan, from not having public comment at these meetings? We allow 15 minutes at one meeting, 15 minutes to another, up until recently, this 30 minutes a month. And I think that we can put aside our time to listen to our constituents. So I don't really even understand the rationale for why you want to limit and prohibit public comment.
I, I think I may have a, a solution. I would like to offer amendment to the agenda to allow for public appearance. That's presently the topic for conversation. It would seem to me that we could address this when we have people present, wish to speak. I think it would be advisable for us to allow for an opportunity for them to be heard. Otherwise, I think we can move forward then. So I will move that we amend the agenda to allow for public appearance, uh, public hearing action. If there's a second, I think we can go ahead and have an agenda.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend, the motion and a second amendment motion. Further discussion. Ray, I just wanted to answer your accusations that my purpose is to stop people from talking at the meeting, and that's, that's never been my purpose. My purpose is to follow the policies that this board has approved and no more and no less. I agree that public input at these meetings is very important. I would welcome that if that's what the board states that it wants to do in policy, but I don't think that the board has done that yet. So in my position as the president of the board, I don't see policy that states that this is a regular meeting or a business meeting. And the policy, as I read it, say that the public comment period is for the business meeting or the regular meeting. And I would love to see that clarified. So, uh, thank you for, for your opinion on that, but it has never been my purpose to stop people from talking at these meetings. My purpose has been to follow the board's policies. Steve?
Point of order with respect to the motion to amend, I think that's by, that violates the open meetings law by adding an agenda item that, that hasn't been noticed within the ruckus of 24 hours.
Well, except that the item currently under discussion is approval of the agenda, which is a notice item.
But you're, you're adding a separate agenda item that is communication from the public, and we have not put the public on notice within 24 hours that they're gonna be able to communicate to the board tonight. And I think that's required under the open meetings law. If you add that, would that modify the meeting?
So perhaps we could, when it comes time for A1, ask if there is any member of the public that would like to speak on this particular topic? And then when it comes time for B1, we could ask at that point whether there's any member of the public that would want to speak on that topic. Would that satisfy people for tonight as far as approving this agenda?
I think that still runs afoul of the open meetings law because you not designated that as an opportunity affordable to the public.
Does that have to be specified whenever you let the public members speak? I don't think so. I think if you open any item that's on the agenda for the public, it's been noticed as long as they stick with the agenda item.
I think the chair can, at his or her discretion, allow for public comment at any point during the meeting. It doesn't directly address Steve's concern, but I think providing the opportunity is certainly something I think that's within discretion with the chair.
So, um, in the interest of getting an approved agenda, can we agree that that's a halfway point, that we can move forward and have a meeting so that we can get this changed and everyone can be on the same page as to where the policy is soon?
Not comfortable with that.
Okay, so we do have a point of order, I believe it was, from Steve. And Gina, can you try to answer that for us?
So, the reason the attorneys can disagree, I would feel comfortable with the board proceeding in the manner you prescribed, Dan, because the point of the open meetings law is to give the public notice of what topics are going to be discussed tonight. And so, well, it would be best to have it on the agenda. I think that the public is not, there's no legal right to talk at a school board meeting unless it is done at the approval of the board, so just putting it on the agenda. So my opinion right now would be that you would have the opportunity to be able to ask members of the public if they'd like to comment on the topics of tonight's agenda.
What about Charles's motion, though? I think that was really the subject of the.
In terms of, as a compromise, though?
Well, Charles, Charles wanted, actually made a motion and there's a second to amend the agenda to put on a public comment period.
I, my opinion would be that would be fine tonight if the board would like to do that.
So we can open it up for any topic that the public want to bring forward?
Yes. Would that be ideal? No, but I don't think you would run afoul of open meetings law.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none?
I just have a question. The, the motion is to add as an agenda item, public comment.
Yes, to amend the agenda to include opportunity for public comment as part of the agenda for the next meeting.
I, I see a distinction between adding an agenda item and legal counsel's view that if the chair wants to recognize members of the public during the discussion of any topic on the agenda as being permissible, there's a distinction there. So I still think the amendment runs afoul of the open meetings law. The attorneys could disagree on the second point, and we do.
If you had asking my preference, my preference would be the way that Dan suggested, and that is at, at some point during discussion, discussing each topic, that the board president asks if any members of the public would like to comment on that particular topic. That would be my preferred route. However, if you want to amend the agenda to include a public comment section, my advice right now is that that would be okay, given the spirit of the open meetings law, but obviously I haven't had time to look into that specific question.
Ray?
Charles, would you be open to withdrawing that motion and then having the public comments thrown to me?
Certainly, anything that would present to be loud, for people who have issues or concerns, they wish to address the board, would be agreeable with me. Obviously, the resolution of this is much more on line than what Dan's always suggested is. We need to talk about this and clarify this as a board. At this point, the amendment does not have a second, so.
It does.
It does.
Yes.
I, I wouldn't, and I feel that the motion would be.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I'll draw my motion. I have to agree with the second.
Okay, so we're back to the agenda. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I don't think we need a motion to allow for public comment during each discussion item, and I will promise to ask for public discussion as we come to each item of discussion and action vote. So is there any further discussion?
The motion is to approve the agenda.
Yes. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Can we have a roll call vote, please, in a split?
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Beeny?
Yes.
Mr. Upchuck?
Upstaying.
Mr. Vann?
No.
Ms. Vogler?
No.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. How does that come out?
Need to, well, extension, it's not a majority of the present board members.
Now we have another board member here. Gina, what can we do about that?
We already said I would be nice. There is a, an approval.
Charles?
Let me, if I may briefly speak to this. I, I think that the board has been wronged and understood that this is an issue we need to address. My hope and expectation is we can move ahead with the plan for a discussion of staff that we can confer, and we don't want to derail that opportunity with an overation which really doesn't need to be addressed, but I think can address something, so my hope is that we'll have votes moving ahead in the pursuit of the next part of the meeting.
So the, the motion fails?
Motion fails.
The only way to bring it back is if someone voted against it, ask for reconsideration. Is that right?
That's correct.
What was the vote, 3-2 in favor?
3-2-1.
3-2-1. We needed four because we had six present.
Six were voting, so there wasn't a majority of those present. And if I could have a point of order, regardless of what happens tonight, I would like to ask for a board meeting by the end of January because we have to approve the open enrollment spaces before January, before February 1st.
Is there anything to be done since we now have a board member who entered while we were voting on the last?
Not unless someone makes a motion for reconsideration.
Do we need to move to adjourn them, or do we just walk away?
Can we take a five-minute break so I could finally answer to that question?
Okay.
And my understanding is that a motion to reconsider has to come from a person who voted with the remaining side.
Correct.
Even as much as there is no remaining side, it would seem that that would be motion to be made by any member.
Really tested me tonight.
Okay, let's take five overall recess.
Thank you.
We know we don't have a meeting.
Yes. Yeah. All right. What can I do to help?
Do you have anything to say? I abstained.
I don't know if you can make a motion to reconsider. I don't think you're that one. I understand. You're saying that the other advisors were putting the last two years. It was discussed by multiple board members.
Why wasn't it on business? I understand the rules, really.
Who made the agenda? Who made the agenda? The board president, superintendent.
Right, right. I said that these are not regular or business meetings, so they don't need to have the whole consensus on the agenda as well as.
She can have.
Well, it's not under the policy.
Why can't during a schedule?
To see if it's clear, being clear, you have read it, there's no doubt that it's a much regular, it's not a regular. It's happening with time. So this is a general thing, which is, after getting to a specific issue, we find that we should.
I think, I think the only way you could really consider the vote.
We are coming back to order.
Right, so I, I have two answers for you, if that helps. The first is that we cannot proceed without having an approved agenda. The second is that in this particular situation, either would be the Ray, Steve, or the two, three votes.
Or Barb.
Or Barb would need to make a motion to reconsider the vote. Alternatively, any board member could make a new motion on the agenda.
So I, what, I think Barb would have, I guess, vote.
Barb would say yes. For the business phase.
I think it was just Ray and Steve, who are no votes.
Dan. And I would vote yes. Okay, so I apologize. So either Steve or Ray would have to make a motion to reconsider the vote.
Okay.
Alternatively, you would have, could have a new motion.
Okay. Ray?
Well, I will make a motion to reconsider because I feel we owe the OEA, who has come to this meeting tonight, a meeting. But as I stated, in three meetings now, I'm very uncomfortable with not having public comment periods. And I think the policy is clear. So I will make that motion to reconsider so that we can move on with the meeting because a lot of people have probably made plans to be here tonight, just be with us, and maybe organize childcare, and, you know, away from their families, so they can be talking to us.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, to reconsider the motion to approve the agenda.
No, I have.
So is there any discussion on the motion?
You can, you can, Charles.
Okay, there is no discussion.
Can we add on to the agenda that, can we put in an item for discussion?
Are you there?
Not as a separate item.
Charles?
Speaking of questions, register is, I do confer briefly with Gina. We could, under item A1, add at the end of the line, we can confer with all staff and members of the public present, which would be inclusive of the notion that you're not adding the item to the agenda, but would incorporate into the sense of what people would like to see.
I think we can do that without even adding that, and I think that's kind of what we have discussed, asking any members of the public, whether they want us to talk about the agenda items when we came up. Ray?
As the person that's putting forward the reconsideration, I'd like to add that that would be explicit and I feel comfortable with that.
That would be a new motion.
Okay.
I should withdraw their motion to reconsider, which is getting too complicated. Okay. You can do that, Ray.
That would be a question, never mind.
Okay, so I will, I will withdraw that and try to put that under motion forward. We can move on.
My motion would be basically to add to the agenda, A1, we can confer with all staff in following language, and members of the public present.
Is that the extent of your?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Are there any extensions? Motion passes. Now we have an unapproved amended agenda, and now we need to vote to approve the amended agenda. So we have a motion then. I think anyone can make that.
I want to approve the agenda as well.
We need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
The motion passes. We have an agenda. Thank you.
I have a point of order question. Is it legal counsel's opinion that we may proceed based upon the last two motions without violating Wisconsin Open Meetings Law? Because I will rely on that.
It is.
Thank you.
I would like that included, that question included in the minutes.
It will be.
Thank you.
All right, we will spend with President's address and move right on to discussion item A1. And at this time, if there's any member of the public who would like to talk about the meet and confer with staff, or if you would like to join us at the meet and confer table, that is where we will be moving right now, and please feel free to join in and make your opinions clear.
Our third meet and confer since, well, the first one in this era was 8:24 or 15, and we'll just go around the table quickly hopefully, and everybody can say who they are. I think we should get everybody, everybody's name, and just what your position is in regard to the school district. So I'm Dan Kraus. I'm the school board president, and we'll go this way.
Barb Keen from the school board.
Steve Black, school board.
Brian Bustler, superintendent.
Gina Jonas, school council, HR director.
Leslie Bergstrom, director of instruction.
Chris Klopp, principal at Netherwood.
Dan Herpiwitz.
Heather Zabu, prayer review.
Kevin Clapham, prayer review.
Charles Upchuck, school board.
John Wetter, with weang, which is six.
I think anyone can make that.
I want to approve the agenda.
We need a second.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion passes, we have an agenda, thank you.
I have a point of order question, is a legal counsel's opinion that we may proceed based upon the last two motions without violating Wisconsin open meetings law, because I will rely on that.
It is.
Thank you. I would like that included, that question included in the minutes.
It will be.
Thank you.
All right, we will spend with President's address, and move right on to discussion item A1. And at this time, if there's any member of the public who would like to talk about, um, the meet and confer with the staff, or if you would like to join us at the meet and confer table, that is where we will be moving right now, and please feel free to join in and make your, uh, opinions clear.
Our third meet and confer since, uh, well, the first one in this era was eight twenty-four fifteen, and, um, we'll just go around the table quickly, hopefully, and everybody can, uh, say who they are, I think we should get everybody, uh, everybody's name, and just, uh, what your position is in regard to the school district. So I'm Dan Kraus, I'm the school board president, and we'll go this way.
Barb King from the school board.
Steve Black, school board.
Brian Bustler, superintendent.
Gina Jonas, school council, HR director.
Leslie Bergstrom, director of instruction.
Chris Klopp, principal at Netherwick.
Dan Herpiwitz.
Heather Zabu, prayer review.
Kevin Clapham, prayer review.
Charles Upwell, school board.
John Wetter, with We Anguish at six.
Diana Gerstendorfer, OEA teaching staff.
Tracy Leiter, OEA president, science teacher at the high school.
Nathan Johnson, science teacher at the high school and OEA spokesperson.
Heather Walner, OEA grade six at RCI.
Diane Frye, OEA and kindergarten at prayer review.
Jennifer Yancy, OEA teacher at the high school.
Kay Blatt, orchestra teacher here at RCI and parent of two children in the district.
Jaisel Zerwick, RCI, as well as a parent of two students in the district.
Gwen Madsen, um, school board member.
Jim White, high school principal.
Jeffrey Lynn, school board.
We're both there to school board, this is working.
Nina, can you talk really loud?
My name is Nina LeBron, I'm a 12th grader at Oregon High School, and I'm studentee assigned to the school board.
Candace White, the director of student services.
Karen Modrowski, Brooklyn Elementary.
Shannon Anderson, middle school.
Hey. Krista?
Krista Planting, candidate for our school board.
An apparent?
An apparent of a high schooler and a fourth grader.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming, and at this point, I would, I just want to say once again, uh, I think these meet and confers are, are very important, I, I do want to say that we are, uh, aware that the things that we discussed in August have still not yet come through into the handbook, but, uh, we are committed to that, and, uh, we are working on it. Right, we're still working on the language.
In the handbook?
Yes. For the, uh, specifically to just pause, uh, etc.
I was waiting for a proposal from the OEA.
Okay, so that's, that's still on the calendar, and, um, thank you for bringing that up, and we look forward to finishing with some changes to our, our, um, our handbook regarding that. So, at this point, Nina?
Um, so we don't have as formal of a topic tonight as we've brought to many of the meet and confers, but what we do have is one topic we'd like to discuss, um, just more to talk around where we're at, rather than look for any resolution, but we just want to have a conversation around a topic. And then we would also like to just bring forward some other things, just, maybe we want to discuss them, or maybe we just want to have a conversation that they're out there, of a number of initiatives that we're looking at with various people in administration, various committees, of things that are of value to OEA right now, that we're looking to move forward on. Um, so the one topic we wanted to bring forward, um, that's been an ongoing discussion in so many venues, in so many ways, but we want to keep bringing forward, is our issues with our sub shortage in the district. Um, and in particular, we just wanted to bring forward, from our perspective, um, some of our concerns about the impacts of the sub shortage, um, and what that has meant to, um, teaching and learning within our buildings. Um, and so I'd like to pass, um, the floor to a couple of our other policy management team folks who pulled together some information about, um, what's going on at their buildings in terms of impacts from the sub shortage.
Hi, Heather Walner.
Is that working?
All right, so, um, here at RCI, what typically happens, um, on any given day when we have a shortage of subs, is there is an SOS sent out either the night before or the morning of, um, the shortage, and teachers are asked internally, uh, to cover these classes. Sometimes we are able to provide coverage, and sometimes we are not. In the instances in which we do cover classes, what happens as a result of that is that we lose time that we need to either be meeting with our colleagues or co-teachers, um, or preparing for working with our learners for the rest of the day. There are times also when we are not able to cover these shortages internally. And what happens when we run out of, uh, coverage internally is the team who is a teacher short, the rest of the colleagues will, um, absorb those learners. So class sizes can increase, um, anywhere from ten, twelve, thirteen learners. So that's not an environment that's conducive to providing the best possible education at that given time. Um, what also is beginning to happen is, it's difficult for educators to call in sick, or take an earned personal day when they know the stress, um, that that's going to cause the other staff in the building, because we are all aware of the shortage that exists, and it's very difficult for us to not be present, because we don't want to cause undue hardship to our colleagues or to our learners.
Well, I'm going to speak from the elementary perspective, and I have a kind of a, uh, conglomerate of comments from the, all three buildings, about the shortage of subs. And again, we've brought this up, we've talked about how there's a shortage of subs, but some of their comments have been that when teachers have to cover classrooms, sometimes it means that that class would have six or seven teachers during the day, because they get somebody from this prep period, somebody from that prep period, because you just don't have a single person who can be with the kids all day. If you do have a single person who can be with the children all day, that might be someone like a guidance counselor, or one of the administrators, who have other roles to play in the building, so then they don't get to, to perform those roles as well. Um, some teachers are asked, rather than to have the sub in their classroom, they have to give up their assessment day. Now, an assessment day is, um, a day when the teachers get a sub in their room, so that they can personally check the reading levels, or the math levels, whatever the assessment is for their class. And that documentation and data is very important to us, that's how we make decisions. But to give up that day is, is pretty tough, because you, that work has to get done, sometimes. Um, another point that was surprising to me is that sometimes we pay for conferences, and, and we are a, a school district that believes in professional development, and we've paid for conferences and not been able to send people, because we didn't have subs for their classrooms. And this has happened as recently as a week ago, when, um, seven attendances were paid for, but six people had to stay back. So, the, the conferences are worthwhile, people appreciate the opportunity to go, and it seems, I don't know, it seems small that, that this substitute shortage is having such an impact on our teachers and our learners. One point that, that people brought up to me is that sometimes substitutes that we do have, because we're short, have to go and substitute in another classroom during the prep time of the teacher for whom they are initially substituting for, which I didn't have a problem with until someone said to me, yes, but those substitute plans, as, depending on how well-versed a sub is in that particular academic area, they might actually have to read through the plans with, with some diligence, to understand what it is they are to present to the students, and that they need that, that prep period. Um, some parents have voiced concerns to teachers about the, this sub shortage, and, um, students, they notice. They notice when they don't have someone who is prepared and enthusiastic about taking them in. There are some classrooms where you just double up on, on the number of students you have. So those are some of the impacts on our learners, um, that I just wanted to share with you.
And at the high school level, it, it seems like we don't have the same kind of impacts there, in terms of, at the elementary school level, there's far more often classes being rolled into one another, and, um, other coverage schemes like that, that at the high school level, very often, reluctantly even, there generally often are people pulled in from their prep periods to do it, and in fact, um, there was one instance in late December where there was a call put out with like sixty minutes advance of like, hey, we don't, still don't have a sub for this hour, and I put in saying, you know what, I can't afford this time, I really, you know, I've got, I'm so far behind, and I said, but you know what, if you don't have a body, I can be there, and right before that class started, it came back to me saying, yeah, we don't have a body for this room, and so I went and did that, and that's a lot of what's happening, is feeling more and more pressure for us to be able to handle this internally, and it's, it's impacting our ability to deliver the high-quality instruction that we need to in our own classrooms as well.
A question, whether it's possible option, what were the options available to us in terms of trying to address this sub shortage? I mean, I am more frankly alarmed, the potential impact, potentially the, the impact on students of this kind of thing, particularly if it's an ongoing continuing phenomenon. Is this something other districts are experiencing as well, this kind of statewide problem, and, and, so, it seemed to me that this would really be a good topic for some longer conversations, to, how we might better address this as a district.
Charles? So from the, from the district standpoint, we are well aware that this has been an issue, um, we've been dealing with this for about two years, um, every school district is in the same boat that we are. Um, we have talked, um, administratively about options, but I haven't felt comfortable recommending any of them to Dr. Bustler, so I'm open to ideas. About on any given day, about eighty percent of our absences are professional development related, and so, you know, we could start saying no to teachers pursuing those opportunities. We haven't wanted to do that at this particular point, um, we did, our teacher comp model has talked about this, and that's why we had proposed adding the five additional professional development days in the calendar, so that we would have non-student days where teachers could get together to collaborate, or pursue professional development opportunities, um, so that is one long-term goal, solution that we have. Um, we have, I would say, you know, anywhere about ten percent of teachers on personal leave, we could say no to that, or decrease the number of days that teachers have. We haven't wanted to do that, because we understand that teachers need those days to do things that they can't get done on the weekends, um, so we haven't wanted to go that route. We have looked at going to a company called Teachers on Call, which subcontracts, their subs, with subcontract to them, are substitute teachers, um, we've been very reluctant to do that, um, and this year, actually, two Dane County schools are leaving them, because it has costed more, and their fill rates aren't any different than other schools. So we haven't felt that that would be a effective strategy. Um, we have looked at, um, increasing the pay for substitute teachers, but then the question is, where do we take that money from, you know, what do we not pay for then? And does, other districts have done that, and actually, at our HR director's meeting, have told all of us to save our money, because it hasn't changed their fill rates either. Um, one thing that is affecting us, although it's not huge, but every person matters, um, with the Affordable Care Act, we are required to offer health insurance to subs who average thirty hours a week. Um, a handful of our wonderful subs haven't wanted to meet that threshold, because they have insurance through their spouses, and if they're eligible for our insurance, then they're not eligible for their spouse's plan. So they have voluntarily reduced their own hours. Um, you know, we have talked about lessening our standards for our substitute teachers, none of us have really been comfortable with that. Um, the one thing we did do is we used to require a teaching license to sub in the district, now we only require the DPI substitute license, and that did increase our pool, so that helped, but we still do a substantial background check, um, substantial reference checks, we have an interview process, and we just are very careful about who we have in our building with our kids. So, I just wanted you to know that we're aware of it, and we are looking at all sorts of options, but again, there hasn't been one that we have felt comfortable recommending, um, but, you know, always open for new ideas, because we know how hard it has been on our staff. We do provide additional compensation for teachers who cover other classes, we have sort of expanded the definition of that, but we know that it's very taxing on all of you to have to do that.
Have we reached out to retired teachers?
We reach out to everyone, I even give my business cards when I meet people, um, so, yes, we have done that, um, you know, again, with some of the changes to WRS, some retired teachers either are unable or unwilling to come back, because that could affect their annuity. So that has been an, also an impact of recent legal changes. No, Leslie, if you want to add anything else?
I think you covered all the bases, Jen.
My question is, what, what would the OEA recommend, it sounds like there are some options open, we could be investigating, want to make sure that you have that input, you're really, um, in the classroom, you know what's going on, and, like, you have some excellent suggestions that we could be implementing, that they can vote.
You know, I do, I, I, I thank and acknowledge the district administration for all the things that they've looked at and stuff, and I don't know that we have any brilliant silver bullet kind of answers right now, which is why, one of the things that we want to do is just have the conversation and, and get as many brains onto this as possible, because I don't know that we're finding the solutions right now, and so, the more people involved with brainstorming and seeing if we've got creative solutions, maybe the more of us there are, the, the better we can find possible solutions, so I, I feel like we're a little bit at a loss right now.
So, um, Gina, just how, if we've thought about lowering the standards, of course, we wouldn't want to lower the standards of safety and background checks, certainly, but, uh, maybe the standards of certification, what's the state law allow for that?
So we, we did change, oh. So, um, we did, we did change our process last year, we used to only, um, have substitute teachers that had a teaching license, but for whatever reason, didn't want to work full-time as a teacher. So last year, we did revisit that, um, many, I think every Dane County school revisited that because of the shortage issue, and so DPI does have a licensing process for substitute teachers, um, you have to have a bachelor's degree, does not necessarily a teaching degree. And so we have, um, we did increase our pool quite a bit, um, we also help teachers, we help people get a substitute teaching license, we help them go through that process, um, part of that process is observing a classroom, and so, um, our administrators and teachers have been very welcoming to help people get licensed as a substitute teacher, um, so DPI, um, in terms of, you know, we have an interview process, we require two reference checks and a criminal background check, um, that's a national background check, not just a state of Wisconsin background check. And so, um, through that process, we don't accept everyone, um, because we felt that, you know, these are people that are in front of our children, you know, I, that's something we could potentially revisit, but I wouldn't feel comfortable hiring any person that I wouldn't want in a classroom with my own child.
So, how, how far does the state of Wisconsin let you go, do you, must they have the certification for, um...
They need to have a substitute teaching license to sub, from DPI, yes.
So then, basically, there's no further that we can loosen the, uh, restrictions on who we can take? We've got the biggest pool that we could find, we couldn't say, all right, for emergency cases, we'll take people with a ba- bachelor's degree and not the substitute certification.
Correct, correct.
We couldn't do that.
No, we could not.
How long does it take to get the substitute certification?
Um, you can do it pretty quickly, it depends on your schedule, you have to do the paperwork and take a class that's online, and then you have to observe a classroom.
Could it be done in a week?
Sure.
We actually have a hiring fair going on.
Tomorrow, right?
Uh-huh, tomorrow we have a sub hiring fair going on from three thirty to five thirty, you could let the staff hide if you're qualified, um, but we have, right now, what happens is, we posted on WeCan, and as people, it's an ongoing posting, and so as we have a group that we feel we could bring in, we'll actually interview about ten people tomorrow, and they'll walk through the steps that Gina was talking about, um, and we help them with all of the paperwork, we set up a, a computer right there onsite for them to go through any of the online training, um, Carol Bride in HR is absolutely spectacular, she walks them through everything, so we try to expedite the process as quickly as we can. Um, but as Gina said, we want the best people in front of our children, and if, speaking from a parent too, we would want someone who is qualified, and we know who they would be in good hands with. You're welcome.
A quick question, uh, what is the cost of licensure?
Hundred dollars, I think, hundred dollars, I believe.
And how long is it good for?
Ooh, I, I would have to look at that one.
My guess would be five years.
Does the applicant pay for their background checks, or is that, the school does that?
The school pays for that. You can do a three-year or a five-year license.
Is there a difference in cause?
I don't believe so.
What have we done to publicize this fair? This is the first I've heard of it, and maybe it's because I'm just not looking at the right things.
So we have at least two hiring fairs a year, sometimes we have more. What we do is, we look at the applications in WeCan, and when we get, so we try to have one at the beginning of the year, and then we have one around January, so that we can catch the graduates who may not have full-time jobs yet. And so, people in education know to look to WeCan to apply. We also posted it on the state of Wisconsin job site, with through Workforce Development, which is the approved website for those who are looking for jobs in the state of Wisconsin, and direct them to apply on WeCan, and then we reach out to the WeCan applicants to let them know that we're having the hiring fair. In addition, I frequently get calls from people that say, I moved into the area, I'd like to sub, and so, I direct them to WeCan, and then I tell them about the fair. Our receptionist does the same for anyone who calls in. So it's a little, it's a combination. I had another person call yesterday who hadn't applied on WeCan, and I invited him to the fair and told him to come, and so he could do his application while he's at the fair.
But we'll also do, we don't just wait for the fair to do hiring. I've actually brought three people in at their convenience throughout the first semester, and walked through the process, and actually, one of our really great subs, he's joined us, you know, midway through, so. Well, we are grateful, as much as everybody wants the subs, we do too, because it's really, really tricky on our end, and we're just so grateful when WeCan get a candidate that can come in at a moment's notice and do an interview.
I assume you're also likely a past applicant? People replied previously, may have not been there?
Yes. Just to be clear, like, we aren't blaming anybody. I mean, I've had numerous conversations with Gina and Dan and Brian, and it's just, I think that by bringing it up in this type of a forum, it's just more people, maybe somebody's watching tonight, and they're like, hey, I never thought about doing that, now they know the process. So I think it's just the more we talk about, hey, look, this is how it's impacting students. You know, you might remember when you were in high school that having a sub was a free day, but what your student loses is those educational opportunities, so we're just trying to kind of keep that conversation on the forefront, like, we don't think that the district has, you know, done poorly with subs. We know that other places are in the same boat. So it's encouraging that we have a fair tomorrow, and hopefully, we'll get some new, some new graduates that are looking to work in Oregon, because it's a great place to be.
Does anybody else want to speak to that? Or it's, I mean, it's, we just really want to keep it up at the forefront, because it clearly is an issue that's impacting us. So beyond that, we've, our policy management team has a number of things in the hopper on a variety of fronts, and we're, we want to always kind of go through the proper channels, discuss with administration, with, work through committees and stuff, before we come to the point of actually bringing something to the board with getting all the right stakeholders involved in something along the way. But we just wanted to share with the board some of the things that we are looking at in the next few months, in the next year or so, that are priorities on our part, that we're either in the process of working through or looking to start working through in the various proper channels. So one thing that we've got in process right now, that is on our end, that we're trying to work up, a proposal from our perspective is, in cooperation with Gina, we've been identifying areas that we're, that we're looking at in the handbook of gaps of where we don't have clarity in the handbook, and one of the places we saw was in evaluation. And Gina shared with us evaluation language, and there was one area we were not comfortable with at this point, in terms of what was there, which is looking at what it looks like to have an educator on a plan of improvement if they're not meeting expectations. And so, we are currently in the process of trying to come up with a proposal for what it could look like for an educator to be on a plan of improvement in order to get them up to speed to being an effective educator within their classrooms, if it's been identified that they do need to work on that. So that's something that on our end, we're working on, and then, once we've got something to bring to the fore, we'll bring back to the administration and work through channels to get that moving forward, to get a full scope of what evaluation looks like into our handbook, hopefully, as well. Another thing that is on our radar is looking at co-curricular compensation, which I know is also on the athletic director, Mr. Carr's radar, in terms of, at this point, since we have no longer had a collective bargaining agreement, there's been no official published co-curricular compensation plan out there, that there have been behind the scenes still things going on in terms of how that's aligned and how pay is decided for co-curricular compensation. But we are definitely interested in taking another look at how co-curricular compensation happens, as well as then, at, through that process, get it back to a point where it's transparent again and published in an official policy. So all sides are clear as to exactly how we are compensating staff for handling of co-curricular activities. Alright. So those are a few things that we have going on right now. I don't know if anybody wants to jump in and share a thought on any of those, or just, hey, we've got those out there as things that we're looking at.
Just something that I'm thinking about regarding the plan of improvement, that's, that's going to take on a bigger and more substantial meaning than it would have if we get the, the compensation plan put through, because someone's raises are going to depend on this. And so, we've got to be careful, and I agree, if it's not clear now, we really need to make it clear so that it's handled in an, in an even-handed way, and somebody doesn't put the cart before the horse and say, we want this person to have a raise, so therefore, we're not going to give them, or help them with a plan of improvement. So, yes, I, I think the, the, that's something that we certainly need to look at and make sure that it's handled in the right way.
Could you, a little more detail about the co-curricular compensation? I'm trying to understand what the issue is, a matter of people are doing, staff are working on co-curriculars and maybe not getting compensated adequately for their time. If you could give more detail, that would be very helpful.
Well, first and foremost, there is not, since we've no longer had a collective bargaining agreement, there is no longer a publicly published co-curricular compensation plan, as far as I can see. And so, right now, there just isn't transparency as to how that is happening, and I may be wrong about that, I haven't fully inquired in terms of that, but it's, it's no, it's not in the handbook, and it used to be in our collective bargaining agreement. As well as, just, I know that there's been some motions to, and I'm not clear on this, and I haven't had the conversations we need to have about what our current status is, so I don't want to speak to too many things that I'm not well-versed in right now. But there are multiple different ways that co-curricular activities are being compensated right now, and so, we're just also looking for consistency in terms of what does it look like to be compensated for co-curriculars, and whether we're evaluating a new model, whether we're evolving where we're at, just looking for both transparency and consistency in the way that co-curriculars are compensated. So it's not that we have broad, deep concerns right now, but we do want to ensure that there is transparency and consistency in the way that they're compensated.
Well, and right before the CBAs went away, there were small committees working on it, and then it just kind of got lost in the shuffle. So it's just kind of revisiting, like, hey, let's not let this get lost. You know, some people have been making the same thing for their activity since it started fourteen years ago, and that was starting to be revised, and then it just kind of fizzled. So, once it fell out of the CBA, it just kind of fell off the radar.
Anything else on those that people would like to ask?
Can you explain how we're handling it?
Sure. So we are using the, as I explained to Nate in email, we are using the same schedule that was in the CBA. It wasn't in the handbook, but we're still using that same process. We did, I think it was brought up, maybe the bargain last year, that we would have a committee with OEA members, that would be chaired by Mike Carr. And so, we did talk a few months ago about revisiting that committee, and seeing if we could get that, get that going again. I don't know how it fits in with the teacher compensation model, obviously, that's been our priority, so we'd have to think about two, how those two fit together.
This is a nice segment, I, we really would love to have some conversation about how we move that issue forward. What's your conversation, Rob? We've been talking about a referendum coming up, you remember? It's not that far away. And I really would love to get some feedback in terms of how the board, if you can work closely with staff, with the OEA, in terms of, and with the community, in terms of, make sure we have a successful outcome of the referendum. Because that, that's key to a whole lot of other things, I'm sure.
I don't know if you're looking for a response to that, or just bringing it up?
Well, my, my thought was that, you know, we might want to set a timetable in terms of some regular, you know, discussion meetings in terms of how we move that process forward to timetable, for trying to get that, that out of the community for conversation.
Charlie, we had a really good meeting last week, where we, the board met with the comp committee, and went through the plan as it is right now, and gave critical feedback, and got feedback. It was a really good and productive meeting, and so, the comp committee is going to be taking a look at that information, everybody understands what the timeframe is in terms of moving out, and so I think what we heard, and Gina, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at, you know, by April and May, you know, getting something formed up, so that before parents go on big, summer vacation, that we have information relative to that, so then they come back, then we gear up. It was a really good meeting last week, and, and the, the plan has progressed, and...
Do you have hard numbers at this point, too?
No, we've got a draft, but I think what we heard was that we want to make sure we have a really good plan in place that people are comfortable with, this and that, the numbers drive out of that, so before floating out a number, we want to make sure we have a, a good plan, so. That was, that was a good conversation.
And Charles, you might remember, with the Capitol referendum, the board hired Joe Donovan from the Donovan Group. He was at the meeting last week as well, and he's been consulting with the teacher compensation plan, because board's hired him, again, to help us on the communication part, and he's been meeting, I'll say, the last year or so periodically with the committee, and we'll continue to do that and bring a plan forward.
And we, we do have a staff survey out right now, and we have fifty-one responses so far, so if you could help spread the word with me to have staff contribute to that, that would be really helpful.
I definitely agree that that is a huge priority for all parties involved to keep moving that forward. I want to just then, the one other thing I want to bring forward is what we're thinking about looking at for our April Meet and Confer, which is that we're work, like, we're working through trying to find more structured conversations, more focused conversations that we can bring to the board with specific things, and in our leadership survey of what folks were, was on folks' minds within OEA, we identified in particular a handful of things that were coming from our special education teachers that they wanted to just have a conversation with the board about, and so, we're looking at bringing to the April Meet and Confer a number of special education teachers who'd like to discuss some topics with the board. So just as a preview, that's what we're expecting to bring to the board for the April Meet and Confer.
I, I just wanted to say that we've been having regular, almost every month, leaders' meetings with Tracy, and Diana, and me, and Dr. Busler, and sometimes we bring in other administrators when their expertise is needed on a particular subject. Those have improved over the year. We started out with just meeting and saying, hey, what's up? And now, we have a semi-agenda that we don't have to vote on, which is nice. It's just what everybody wants to put on there. It's not a public meeting, so we don't have to notice it, and all that, but we've been having some good conversations, and I think we've had some good results from some things that have been brought up. And so, if there are any things that you don't want to wait for the next Meet and Confer meeting, or there's things that you want to bring to the attention of the school board and the administration, tell your colleagues that, bring it to Tracy, bring it to Diana, they'll, they can bring it to either the Leaders Council, I can't remember what you call it, or, or to our meeting, to your...
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors meeting, or to our meeting, or to both. And, uh, things get done.
When I was on the board recently, I remember we used to have something called Problem Solving Home Table, at each of the buildings, and my understanding is that's pretty much faded away.
Yeah, this model is kind of taking that over.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if there's some value in looking at re-establishment, reigniting some kind of, you know, regular discussion at building level, ground issues that you might be dealing with, or want to deal with, that might perhaps be in this as well?
I can speak for the high school, because that's where I am. I do have a standing meeting with Jim, and other meetings have been scheduled, as the need has arisen in other buildings, so I don't know if, I mean, if, if all of you guys out here with life on, I'm, you know, let's, let's look at calendar. But so far, bringing things to leadership has seemed to be working right now.
Is there any member of the public or anyone else who would like to say anything more before we close this part of our meeting? We can open up a whole new topic, don't, don't feel like Nathan gets to bring up everything. This is, this is an open, open forum, so. Nina?
I just have a question, and just like totally add curiosity. What is like, is there any specific thing that's causing such a shortage in subs? Or is this like a weird, like, people aren't applying for their sub licenses right now? I'm totally just curious, it's like...
I have an opinion on that, at least, on cycles that continue to occur. Whenever the unemployment rate is under five percent, we have a really difficult time finding substitutes. That's happened for the last thirty years. I would say, in addition to that, the challenging environment that all of us educators work in, from a state support standpoint, is impacting the number of people getting licensure at the university level, and ultimately, coming back out into working in the field of education. So we're sort of getting hit by two parts, sort of a shrinking of educators statewide because of the challenges that we've had the last several years, plus the economic environment where, depending on which economist you believe, if you have five percent unemployment, it's full employment. Most people have a job, according to economists. I don't necessarily believe that, but three years ago, three years ago, we were at almost ten percent unemployment, and we had less challenges with substitute positions. So we're going to see this again. It's not, the tough part is... It's not, the tough part is, I don't think it's going away anytime soon. This is a problem that is plaguing us, and we have to work together, we have to work together on it. Anyone is willing to challenge that opinion that I just tossed out there?
Gina, could I ask you just to comment on, say, if you were going to tell somebody the advantages of becoming a substitute teacher, then what would you say? Can you kind of choose your days? Are you able to work as much or as little as you want, or pick which school you work in? Can you talk about that a little?
Sure. So, we have a wonderful tool called ASAP, and it's a computer program database, which John Tanner could explain much better than I can. But what it does is, it's an online system where you can call in by phone, so you don't have to have a computer internet access at home, and it tells you the available jobs for the day. So, you pick where you want, you know, which jobs you'd like to pick up. The teachers who need a sub usually put very good descriptions in there of what their, you know, what the lesson might be, or what the class might be doing for the day. And so, our subs can go in, it's sort of first come, first served, in terms of which jobs that they want to pick up. If something isn't filled by the night before, then ASAP actually calls the substitute teachers on the list to let them know that there are jobs that are open. So, it's not only like the substitutes' choice, but then ASAP does like sort of a proactive approach to try to get the jobs filled the night before. And so, you know, I think, I mean, we're all in this business because we love kids. I don't think there's anything better than, you know, getting to see our different building and our different students. We have wonderful students to sub for, substitutes, you know, frequently tell us that they choose us over other districts because we have such wonderful kids, and our teachers leave them so well-prepared. So, I think for people that are interested or would like to try it, you know, we would certainly welcome them to do so. I don't think you can find a better district to work in.
What if someone only wanted to work on Wednesdays and Thursdays, say? Could they find something within our district to do that?
Yes, it's up to them how much they want to work and which jobs they want to pick up. So, it's not as though they have to commit to any certain day or any certain time period, it's all by their choice.
If they wanted to work full-time, could they manage to do that with our district?
If they were open to all buildings and all different types of students, I would say they could find an opening daily.
Let me just, on a positive note, describe to you something that Barb and Juan and Brian and I observed on Friday. I think you know that one of our colleagues, Lou Kinsey, received the Global Educator of the Year award. She received that award on Friday at the state school board conference, which we were at, and to give you an understanding of that scene, it's the largest ballroom in the Wisconsin Center. It's filled with administrators and school board members, about 2,000-plus in that room, and she got presented by Tony Evers with the award onstage, was the spotlight of it. It was really exciting as a district to see Lou get that award, and the smile on her face said it all, and we all should be very proud to have one of our own colleagues get that award in that type of setting, so. It was really good. We got a picture, I think, they were taking official pictures of that ceremony, so we'll make sure that gets out to the public, and then also to you, so you can share that with Lou.
Just had a clarifying question. I took some notes here, and I had heard that when there isn't a sub available, 12 to 13 students might be going into other classrooms. Does that mean that entire class is being distributed amongst other teachers? Is that what we're talking about? And so, that might mean that other classes could have upwards of 30 students? Is that true? Maybe even in the 40s? I want to kind of get those numbers straight.
More in these classes.
Okay, so that's really a large increase in the class size. Okay, so that's something I wanted to know. And then also, the issue about seven teachers are going to go to some conference, and six were not even to go. Could someone could go into that a little bit more in detail? Because that concerns me. That's professional development, it also costs the district money, and the fact that the six of the seven had to, I'm thinking, stay back in order to teach? Is that what we're hearing?
My details are, I don't want to detail beyond that, but that, I think the point was, is that the teachers are saying that they really appreciate the opportunities, and they write the sub plans, and they do the best they can, and they find it so unfortunate that we just have this situation where there aren't enough subs to go around, and they get pulled away, that they have to be back in their classroom. So, I think that's really different.
With this one, I know parts of what I heard is that everything had been paid for with this conference, and that at basically just about the last minute, there was still, their positions were unfilled, and so, rather than six of them be gone, and like have classes of 60 kids trying to figure out how to do this or something, they stayed back to teach their classes.
Okay, so, we'll wrap up this part of our meeting, and thank you, everyone, for coming. Thanks to Nathan, and thank you, everyone else. And I always enjoy this. Thank you for bringing the topics up. Okay, so, we will move to B1, open enrollment space availability. Dr. Bussler?
The report that you have in the board packet, I'm not going to go over every detail, but I do want to hit a couple of highlights, a couple of highlights for you. If you look at table 1, that is an identification of our maximum capacity by sections that we've done from an enrollment projection standpoint. We also provide you with the residential growth that we've reserved, and then the number of spaces available. You'll notice at the elementary level, we have less spaces available than we historically had, and that's because some of the increasing enrollments that we've seen. If you look at table 2 quickly, we, in 2015-16, our open enrollment spaces are down about 30 from where they were last year. There is a clause in state law that allows the board to come back and adjust our open enrollment spaces in June if we have additional requests, so we're taking a more conservative approach with this year's plan. Table 3 looks at enrollment between May and August, because in faster-growing school districts, or in communities where there's families moving in and moving out, that is a big number for us, and one that we have to monitor. Table 4 is student move-in and move-outs by grade. It's all reconciled with the previous historical information. And what I'll share with you is perhaps the information that you're most interested in, as I'm anticipating it. At kindergarten this year, you know, we've had large class sizes. We're looking at a smaller kindergarten class in the 16, 17 school year, but we would like to retain all 13 sections, which will lower our kindergarten class size rates. In terms of first grade, because we're moving a large kindergarten class to first grade, we're looking at adding two teachers in first grade for this next year, again, to offset and to keep those class sizes as close as we can to our 22-to-1 guideline. First grade this year was a smaller class, and we can actually reduce a second grade class for next year, going from 14 sections to 13 sections, and still be right where we need to be in terms of the class size guideline. In third grade, we're moving a large second grade classroom, or second grader, a large population of second graders to third grade, so we're going to add two staff to third grade. Fourth grade, we can accommodate our third graders that are moving to fourth graders, plus open enrollment, with 12 sections. So, we have taken a more aggressive plan with staffing for this next year. We're not asking you to approve the staffing for this, we are sharing those staffing allocations, so you have an understanding of how we intend to support the open enrollment students, plus our resident growth that comes in. But when you look back at our open enrollment slots that we have, for kindergarten, which is the group that we have the largest number of slots, we have 34, but we're projecting to top out under 290 students compared to 308 students that we have this year. So, our 13 sections will drop class sizes in kindergarten. At first grade, we're accepting two students right now, second grade, eight, third grade, two, and fourth grade, 11. Those are very conservative estimates, and principals and staff will keep an eye on those estimates through our open enrollment period, and we may be back at the June meeting asking to increase those spaces if residential growth has not gone up significantly, or if we have a lot of requests, and we can make it cost-effective to accept students and add a teacher in a corresponding way. So, that, I mixed two concepts together for you, but I knew that the board was sensitive, as I was this last year, to the challenges we had with class size, so I wanted to give that some context. Gina, is there anything that I missed, or you would like to underscore on our proposal?
Move approval, then I have to come. Motion? Need a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, for approval of the recommendation from the administration. Steve?
This is a routine exercise that we do every year, as required by statute, to emphasize what Dr. Bussler said, it's not a staffing plan, it's not a staffing decision model tonight, that comes later with the budget, but it does set the threshold in terms of the number of students we could accept for open enrollment, in that we are being conservative compared to past years, just being sensitive to the number of students for residential growth, and so, I think this is a good way to approach that with the ability to revise it in June, depending on what our numbers show.
Other comments or questions? Charles?
Yeah, I was noticing that the sections for third grade are basically, current enrollment is also our maximum capacity. What factors are we anticipating that might affect that, are there move-ins?
Obviously, we could always have some move-in and move-outs in third grade. We tend to, that's why we only put the limit at two students, two open enrollment students in. We do have, a couple of the principals have been looking at numbers, and we already know a couple of families are moving out, it's not uncommon for them to notify us of that point. That's why we have the four reserved spaces, because we know, we basically have six, we have six fourth graders that we know are going to be leaving us, or, I'm sorry, six third graders that we know are going to be leaving us, which creates that capacity for the four that are reserved for residential growth, and the two for open enrollment growth.
I noticed there's a similar situation for sixth grade, and is this kind of fluctuation pretty normal?
Yes, very typical. We live in a mobile society. You never know who's going to show up for sure until the first day of school. I wish it was more precise than that.
What's the date that we need to let open enrollment applicants know that they've been accepted?
Gina, is that, that's in June, right?
It is.
Yeah. Years ago, it used to be August, but basically, open enrollment runs all year long now. But the opportunity for us to, we couldn't accept a student after June if we didn't have an appropriate space. So, we have, in June, we have to give you another projection, or look with these projections that will carry us throughout the entire year. The only way we could open a slot, let's say in October, is if a student left us in September, if that follows.
And I assume the board will have a chance to review these numbers before that deadline, otherwise-
Absolutely. Yeah, and your first, your first opportunity to review the numbers will be when we put the staffing plan together, because we'll have a sense, some parents will turn their open enrollment applications in really quickly, so we'll have a sense where we are open enrollment-wise as the board's approving the staffing plan, which will be April of 16 for next year. And then, we'll start that building block process, and ideally, we get it right, so that when you finally approve the budget in accordance with state law, not because you're lagging, in October, that we've hit those enrollment projections, and we have the right staffing in place.
Gina?
Oh, so, I just wanted to add, Jeff, a second part to your question. So, if the board approves these spaces tonight, then we can't change them until after June 10th, when we notify the families. So, we can always open up more space at the board meeting in June, which I suspect we may do, and come to and ask for that, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm answering your question correctly.
And so, the reason we may add spaces in June is if we don't have too much within the district growth?
Exactly, that if we find out that we have more room, because maybe we have more move-outs, or less movements than anticipated.
So, I assume that these spaces are allotted or calculated so that our class sizes are calculated to stay within our guidelines?
Ideally, yes.
Just coming back to the topic of conversation during the confer, obviously, our interest in maintaining class size is a critical one. But I was really astounded, I think, as we were discussing problems of finding subs, the extent to which those numbers really are out the window in the number case where we don't have enough subjects.
Okay, so, I believe we need to have a roll call on this?
Yes.
So, Jane, would you call a roll on the motion to approve the recommended open enrollment numbers?
Mr. Vath?
Yes.
Mr. Uppac?
Yes.
Ms. Beany?
Yes.
Ms. Bogler?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Meadson?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Motion passes, and now, we are left with adjournment. Need to adjourn?
Second.
A motion, a second, to adjourn, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, say nay.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.